Call to order, the City Council meeting for the City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, October 17th is now five o'clock. Will the city clerk please call?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Mike Pakshavinsky.
Here.
Tim Riappel.
Here.
Henry Tweeten.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does turn the quorum, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open forum and opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff or boards and commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. If you'd like to address the City Council, please come up to the podium to do so at this time. I see none. I'm gonna change it up a little bit here. It's not on the introductions, but I'd like to have Reed come up and introduce our new senior center director. I know it's down below that we're, it's on the agenda for approval, but I just want to have introductions.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is Mrs. Judy DiVali?
DiVali.
DiVali, thank you. Mrs. Judy DiVali. She'll be tentatively planned to start at the Senior Center on October 30th. She's been a resident of East Grand Forks for a number of years, working at the Good Samaritan Society as our activities director. So we're really excited to have her join the team over here with Parks and Recreation and Of course the City. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks Reed.
Thanks Judy. Approval minutes for the minutes of October 3rd, regular meeting, October 10th, special meeting, and October 10th work session. Moved by Grassel.
Second.
Second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? See none, roll call please.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Scheduled bid lighting's none, scheduled public hearings none. Consent agenda, items under consent agenda will be adopted with one motion, however, council members may request individual items to be polled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. Anybody want items four through eight polled at all for discussion? See none, motion for four through eight, please.
I move four through eight.
Second.
Moved by Grassel, second by Mr. Demers. Any discussion or questions? Roll call please.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Now, received reports of officers, boards, and commissions. Number nine, regular meeting minutes of Water, Light, and Power and Building Commission for September 21st, 2017. Communication, there's none. Old business, there is none. New business, number 10. Consider adopting resolution number 17-10-74, entering into a master partnership contract between the City of East Grand Forks and the Minnesota Department of Transportation to coordinate the delivery of transportation services and maximize the efficient delivery of such services at all levels of government. Is there a motion? Move.
Second.
Moved by Vetter, second by Demers. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call please.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 11, consider adopting resolution 17-10-75, authorizing Witseth, Smith, and Knowlton to proceed with soil boring in Senior Center parking lot without exceeding $2,000 to survey their parking lot and alley and prepare plans to address drainage issues without exceeding $6,500. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Pakshavinsky.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call please.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 17-10-76, approving and adopting a complete amendment to the East Grand Forks Comprehensive Plan, changing the commercial designation to low and medium residential designation for the 2.7 acres of Lot 1, Block 2, Cooley View addition.
Move.
Moved by Pakshavinsky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vetter. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call please.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 13, consider adopting resolution number 17-10-77, approving the rezoning of Lot 1, Block 2, Cooley View addition from urban expansion reserve to plan unit development.
Move.
Moved by Pakshavinsky.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? See none, roll call please.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Motion is carried. 14, consider approving the final plat of the replat of Lot 1, Block 2, Cooley View addition, along with all staff recommendations with the townhome association agreement would be reviewed and approved by the city staff and city attorney. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vetter. Mr. Holstead?
I was talking to Mr. Murphy today and then as well as had some conversations with Mr. Neal because we wanted to make sure that this property had restrictions before we approved the development to make sure that the infrastructure and such was going to understandably be private infrastructure and the responsibility of the property owners. And in doing so, I ended up going through the performance standards under their PUD and I haven't had enough time to talk about it, but under the performance standard 125 subdivision, it talks about potential private infrastructure and specifically talks about private infrastructure that there is no private infrastructure in PUDs other than street lighting and streets that may, that must be similar in character to the standards. I know that there may be some type of waiver hardship exception. I haven't, I didn't get an opportunity to look into that just due to the configuration of the lots along, at least on the south, the south portion of it for the twin home development. However, everything on there is going to either be private, private infrastructure, private grinders, private force main, and then if we start talking about the development across the street in the Brothers addition, everything in there again is private infrastructure. And since I'm not, since I haven't had a lot of time to take a look at it, it just kind of came to my attention. I haven't been able to talk to Nancy about it. I felt that I needed to bring it to your attention. And it may need to be looked at or we may need to see if we can have some type of waiver and exception because there's a hardship in that area. I don't know. I haven't been able to look at it in depth for today. I apologize for the last minute. It just kind of came up because I was supposed to be drafting a document and had a conversation with Mr. Neal and started looking at some more specifics about it and it just came to my attention today.
So with our language in there, just hang on a second. Our language in there reviewed and approved by the city staff and the city attorney, does that cover us then? That if we do find something or something can be brought back or is this something that you don't want to have approved tonight and then brought back? I know that Nancy's not here and I know that they're wanting to get that south end going. So that's, I guess you tell me what, are we covered under this?
I'm not sure if we're covered. I mean, it sounds to me that we're going to approve it. I know it's subject to approval of city staff, but I'm not exactly sure what that means at this point. You know, are they thinking that they're going to get into the ground because there still needs to be? I know that it's, it's kind of an urgent development towards the end of this, end of the season right now. I'm just not sure that I'm going to be able to find any exception to it. I don't want to have any, anything misconstrued that it's going to be approved and next week they're going to start digging or, you know, requesting a building permit. So I'm not sure if we're covered there.
So, under recommendation from you, would it be that we vote no and bring it back or would it maybe be the recommendation from your office that us?
Either that or I don't know if I would vote no. I would just table it.
I just want to make sure what.
I would table it so that we don't have, necessarily have a decision on the matter because we're not actually saying no. It's just unknown at this point in time if it satisfies or it goes along with our city zoning.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Mr. Emery, sorry.
So the discussions we've had kind of at our weekly utility meetings is, it was my understanding that like Mr. Holstead said, the force main, the grinder pumps and the, you know, the homes, all of that would be private. The developer, the homeowner would be responsible for future maintenance. As far as the water main system in the McBrotter Development on the north side of 13th, that water main system is looped kind of from Bigland in the development and it comes basically back out to Bigland. So it is a loop system. There is a utility easement for that, so that water system will be maintained by, owned and maintained by the city. So I think the only thing that would stay private would be that the individual force main system, pressure system.
The only thing I'd add to that is we're talking about the twin homes and the townhomes. In that area, the water service lines, we're responsible up through the curb stop and then the developer takes it from there. Is that what it is?
Make sure I have this correctly so we don't have to table it or table it, make sure we're doing it correctly. The final, the final plat of the replat of Lot 1, Block 2 is only covering the south side.
Correct.
That's the twin homes.
So that would only be two, be the, be like you're building a new home in there anyway so you're not going to have really private system in that one.
The force main though goes across the road.
Across the road.
I'm just clarifying the water.
The water side, this is.
Right, I understand that.
Yep. This is a different for the water service lines from one side. And since, and I, and I apologize, I just wasn't involved in any of the planning discussions up until this point and I'm not trying to stop the development. I'm just bringing it to your attention and I'm telling you, I haven't had enough time to talk to Nancy or look into it.
Mr. Murphy?
If I could get some input from Public Works Superintendent Scott all there as far as with the, you know, the force main coming out of there, that would be a private service line, but where does that connect into the city sewer system?
It'd be a private, private force main coming from the twin homes across 13th, excuse me, and then that would parallel down Bigland Road within their private, I guess within their private lot on their own. It would be part of the other McBrotter or Broder on the, on the north end. It would go through there and then it would tie into a manhole that would, would be provided by them, by the developer, turned over to the city and there'd be a city easement for that manhole and sewer system that would, that would tie into our stuff that's on Bigland. There'd also be a valve there and the whole purpose of that and the purpose, the reason that we wanted that is if we have to do work on our main, we have to have a way to shut their force main off. In the event we did that, in the event that that happened, we would let those residents know that we had to do some work. We'd shut it off and the manhole is really almost for their, their wellbeing because if somebody ended up flushing a toilet or flushing some water, then that manhole acts as a reservoir kind of for a little bit of fluctuation anyway in there. And then we'd have a valve, a valve to shut, shut that off, so. So from that point over, it would be the city's and there'd be a 20-foot easement coming out to us.
And that's on the east side of Bigland?
Correct. Yep. Anything else?
So the question is, is do we want to have the, Mr. Riappel and Mr. Vetter call their motion and table it or do you want to?
I wish you table it.
I'll pull my motion. Draw the motion from Mr. Riappel and Mr. Vetter. We have a motion to table it.
To table it then.
Better moves to table it. Mr. Riappel, second.
We have one question. Why can't we have city services in there?
As far as the sewer goes, we have a force main that runs along there, but we can't tie their service into the, to our force main. We'd have to tie it into the gravity main and that's much further down Bigland. And if we wanted to do a parallel gravity main along there, that the elevation is too low. So we need to, in effect, a lift station down there to lift, to lift the water our way, so.
Inside of every PUD, I would think there would be some private water and sewer. And it's just a question of, you know, how far does it extend before it connects with city sewer and water? But I would just have to believe any PUD, especially one that has maybe more than one building, there's always going to be some privately owned utilities inside of there. So it's just a question of how much and where does it tie into city owned and then to make that real clear from a maintenance standpoint.
My question is if we table this, I haven't gone to a vote yet, but if we table this, do we remove any of the following items on the agenda then?
They'd all have to be tabled then.
No, you can do.
14, 15, 16, 17.
15, 14. 16 and 17, at this point, I would think could still go forward and still be approved at.
So 15, we would have to not be able to take any action on it, but 16, 17 we can.
Correct.
Because that's the one across.
I just want to make sure that we're not.
16 and 17 we can?
Yeah, that's the larger one across the street.
Yeah, but there's private stuff in there then too.
But we're not getting to the final approval on that. We were doing the preliminary on that. We could do that with, we could do that with conditions.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Mr. President, Steve has something.
Mr. Emery, sorry.
The other thing I just wanted to bring up and I did hand out some drawings to you guys, and this is a follow-up to Mr. Demers's question last week at the work session in regards to plating of these two pieces of property and the future roundabout. So I did pull out the next day, the Bigland Road study and completed by Alliance Engineering. You can kind of see what they had originally laid out there. They were kind of shifting the centroid of that roundabout kind of to the, what I almost called the west. I did talk to Mike Anderson, let him know that in that northwest corner with what Robertson has done there, we may have a little bit of right-of-way issue there. So they anticipate that they would be able to shift that centroid of that roundabout back in line with the center line of that intersection. But what that brings up then is just question as far as what you may or may not need for additional right-of-way on, let's say, the northeast and the southeast side of the property that's currently being developed. Mike's quick, Mike Anderson, now his quick look at it is he thought, you know, potentially you may want to take kind of a 30-foot by 30-foot triangle there, which I kind of showed on the second sheet there. But Mike did say in order to really kind of pin that down, they would have to do a little bit, little bit of just preliminary conceptual layout, shifting again the roundabout more to the center and figuring out the streets and everything that come into that roundabout. So I don't know if that's the direction we want to go right now. We did talk to, again, Mike Anderson about doing that work. He's estimating probably about 40 to 50 hours of their time to kind of, kind of revise the layout, which, you know, they're estimating at about $6,000. So I don't know if we want to go down that road at this point just to make sure we maintain right-of-way or if we just kind of go off of his gut instinct and go and just make sure we get that 30 by 30 triangle, so.
Questions from Mr. Emery on that? Mr. Demers?
I guess my, my take is, is you've got force main coming out from between those two, two twin homes, correct? Into that Lot 5.
Yep.
Why not, why not just over, exaggerate maybe even at 30 feet and maybe go 60 feet or whatever and make that triangle? It seems like Lot 5 isn't going to be used for anything other, and you're already probably going to want to have some sort of a easement depending on what we decide with the public private force main type of stuff. Make that bigger into Lot 5, that easement for the road just to, I mean, that way you save a week's worth of work of shifting a circle over.
And even on kind of on that northeast side, I mean, other than some utilities in that northeast corner, we're really not impacting anything there too. So again, I mean, if you wanted to play safe and do a 50 by 50 triangle, you know, not spend, like you said, the money right now just to. I guess my, my take is go bigger on the easement until you have it figured out and if you build a roundabout there, I mean, you're going to need space for not just the roundabout, but for sidewalk and all that kind of stuff. Put it into the plan now and if it someday you build a roundabout and it doesn't come up as big as you think, you can real, you can, the city could replat it or whatever.
Get back the extra to the.
Right, I guess, I just, it doesn't appear like it's going to be used right now for anything anyway and I think we should have some access easement there anyway for that force main or depending on what's happening there, so.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Council President. I guess there's a couple of points I'd like to add to this. We did talk about this earlier today and one of the things that we're looking at is if, if we're going to do this, particularly if, with the unknown of whether the roundabout will actually be completed, what the, will, if it will require this or not, we would be probably looking more on the lines of trying to get and asking for an easement rather than a right-of-way due to the fact that that would be easier to turn back to the properties at some point in the future if we don't do that. The other item I wanted to bring up is the larger that we go, potentially the less likely or less willing the property owner or the developer would be to grant an easement for that. It starts getting into items for setbacks, those type of things they might ask for compensation on that. We're not, as far as I know, we're not required to get, to do that. We can make it a condition of the plat, however, it could complicate the negotiations of it. So the, I should say, the larger we go, the more likely we are to get some pushback.
Well, I guess that's my point for raising the question now. We're in the planning, plating phase where you can do it through an easement process. You do it 10 years from now when you want to do a roundabout, then it's really expensive. So that's what I'm trying to.
Another item to bring, once, because we're going to table it, be another good item to bring back to go through.
Exactly.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Emery, just want to make sure I don't miss you. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Now I'll take roll call on the tabling, please.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Motion is carried. 15, we will not take any action on. 16, consider granting preliminary approval of McBrotter Acres addition plat along with all staff recommendations.
Move.
By Grassel.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I don't know if this falls under the plat, well, yeah, it would fall under the plat. I guess my two objections to this property, again, I said in the work session, I'm glad it's being developed. My two big objections are the access off of the property to 13th. I think if it was reconfigured, you could have that access all leave and go out onto Bigland. I don't agree with the access on the 13th from the twin homes, but it's either 13th or Bigland and I'm willing to, I'm willing to go with the 13th. This one, if you extended the road, laid it out differently, you could have access that continues on and out to Bigland, so I don't approve of that. Also, I just have a problem with the lot size here. I think when we talk about how we plan, how we lay out our city, when you put in these giant lots, it ends up costing everybody more money down the road because we build a less dense city. Infrastructure ends up costing more as you move out. And I guess my take is if you want to live on a farm, live in a farm, but this is a city and we should have some, at least a tendency towards density. As we see throughout our dealings with building infrastructure, land is relatively cheap around here. I mean, it's not like we're in Tokyo, we're in the Red River Valley where it's expensive, but it's reasonable. Land is cheap. Infrastructure is expensive and every foot that you add on to any infrastructure, it makes it more expensive for everybody. And we see that people don't want to pay that. So I guess my point is, is the size of lots affects the denominator of how we pay for things. And I think we should set a standard for what size lots we have in the city. And I think these ones are just, this is like a farm development outside of town. And I guess, I don't, I know there's people that will disagree with me, but that's my objection to this.
Any else, Mr. Demers?
Nothing right now.
Anybody else have anything? See none, roll call please.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
No.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 17, consider granting preliminary approval for the McBrotter Acres addition PUD concept development plan along with all staff recommendations. Move. By Grassel.
Second.
Second by Tweeten. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
No.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Claims number 18, consider authorizing city administrator to clerk treasurer to issue payments or recognized bills and payroll.
Move.
Moved by Demers.
Second.
Second by Grassel. Any questions or discussion? See none, roll call please.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweeten.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky. Park Chavinsky?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Regander.
Welcome, Judy. Good to have you here. You will know that you have two very good representatives in Mr. Olstead and Mr. Reappell that keep us posted on when your special meals are and other special events. And so I think you will find us over there once in a while, especially if the food that you're offering sounds particularly good. So, welcome board and we're so glad that you're here to carry on the tradition that we've had. It's really been good for our, our seniors and others in the community, so thanks for, for joining the team. This Thursday midday is the Northland State of the College address, so anybody who's planning to go over there, make sure that you keep that on your calendar for this Thursday midday. And we do have two openings on a board and a commission, so I just put that out since I know these meetings are streamed and folks can see them here and there. And we do have two openings and, and just in the future, we'll always have openings. Folks will move out of town or hit an age of retirement and want to go. And so, please, by all means, anyone who has interest in serving on a board or a commission, those are all posted on our website. And is the form up yet to show interest?
Not yet.
Soon you'll see a form on there that you can fill out and send in just to identify that you have interest and, and that'll give us a chance to call you back then and, and connect on some of that. This past weekend, I was in Chicago for my 30-year reunion from my school days, feels like about five years. Chicago's a crazy town. I did grow up here, went to UND and then on to Chicago. Between the traffic and everything else, it was just really, really good to get back out of there and get home all in one piece. So I'm glad to be back and I'm not quite ready to, to be put out to pasture yet, even though it's been 30 years. That's all I got.
Do you want to say what boards are open?
Say again, please?
What boards or commissions that are.
Oh, yeah, right now, Water and Light and Civil Service are being considered to be filled. And we do have names kind of in the hopper for each of those, but no, no decisions have been made, so I'll be bringing names forward for consideration. Cemetery, we're closed. Are we closed? We're not closed.
Same, we're open.
We're open?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. That's why I didn't mention that one, it looked like we had a solid movement into that. Perfect, so cemetery. Excellent, thank you.
Wanted to make sure. Mr. Vedder?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Park Chavinsky?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Reappell?
Nothing.
Mr. Tweetin?
Mr. President, I'd like to call Charlotte to the frontier to explain further substantial gifts that we got about a week ago. It didn't get very big coverage in some medias, but some medias did cover it. Go ahead, Charlotte.
Jim Fisher has been a long-term resident from this region, from Grand Forks actually, who found a home for his collection of books, 40% of which is military history. And he decided that our collection on the east side is a place where it belonged, so when he was given the very bad news that his life was not going to extend a lot longer, he went to work to find a place to put them and he chose the Campbell Library.
Good.
One thing that's very certain, before this, we had the largest military history library in the state of Minnesota, bigger than Minneapolis. Now this puts an insurance policy on it, it's much bigger yet. One of the things that happened in the first library we had down by Second Street, we lost 750 good military history books and 250 tapes. That was a very substantial loss because we had books from Australia, received from people from Australia, from Canada, numerous other countries in Europe, and so, but what she's got now, I'm going to ask her to do printout so everybody understands it. But if we've got people that want to research any part of military history, we've got a good place there and she's got a staff that will explain it. And I hope that the two, three school systems here utilize our library, especially this part of it, more often. Our history is quite a history and if you think about it, it's still the greatest democracy that's ever been in existence in the world, so this particular part of that library is very, very important. And people complain very often about our government, but I don't see anybody that's trying to move to Russia or they think China's better or places like that. And we're going through some of that chirp chirp now in the news media. All, I'm not going to say anything else, thank you.
Mr. Demers?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Grassel?
Nothing for me.
I have nothing for tonight. Mr. Murphy?
I have nothing.
Mr. Gaults?
Setting up.
Mr. Emery? Anything from department heads? I'd like to call Mr. Gordy though, I want, could you kind of explain to everybody, upcoming November is the Northern Valley Career Expo? Kind of like to explain what our involvement's going to be in that and what you do on that and who attends that, so you, we all know who's going to be involved in that from the city level. I think it's very important that we're doing this.
The Northern Valley Career Expo is a, is a group of people, I'm part of the steering committee on that and it's chaired by a person on the Grand Forks Economic Development Commission and by a person from the Grand Forks School District. It, the group brings together 10th graders from about 50 miles in all directions, there are about 1,500 10th graders who go to the Alara Center, each spends a half a day there to learn about careers that are available in this area. There are a lot of careers, good careers and good job opportunities in this area, but when kids are growing up, for the most part, what they learn is what their parents do or what they see on police, jobs they see on TV like police or fire or, or attorneys or something like that. But this is to let them know, there's a lot of other opportunities, some of which require college education, some of which you can do without ever going to college, depending upon what, what the job is. But it opens up the door. There are, I want to say, some 50-ish exhibitors who show off what their companies do. For example, Zaverell has, has an exhibit there. And they talk about the kinds of jobs and the education and the training needs you need to do those kinds of, those kinds of jobs. From our part, I, like I said, I work, I, I serve on the steering committee and we have reserved a booth where we can show the kinds of opportunities that are available over the long term with the City V's Grand Forks. Our booth will actually be next to the booth that Grand Forks has. And what is happening here is I've invited the different departments who do, such as the Public Works and Water and Light, Police, Fire, Parks and Recreation, and Library, if they can spend part of the day manning the booth so that they can let the, our youngsters know that there are, that there are opportunities here. Like I said, about 1,500 children, 10th graders are, attend the program and it's about the, I want to say the fifth or sixth year that it's going on and we're pleased that we're able to do it and we hope that it has a long-term impact upon the willingness of youngsters to stay in the area, so often youngsters leave. We all know about workforce issues and this is one way to try to let people know their opportunities and that we can retain our workforce for the future.
I know last year I took the opportunity to attend the better half of the day, most, and got to attend some of the seminars that it provides, some of the companies do, do meet and greet and then talk about what they have to offer. I think it's a great opportunity for our businesses in town here that they take, you know, take the opportunity to be there. I think it's, you know, a great thing that sophomores get to see what is available in the city and see what they can do that, hey, I want to still live here after I graduate college. It's an opportunity to learn, you know, there's many different things that you can do. So, I think it's, it's a great opportunity for our children and great opportunity for our business, so, thanks.
If anybody wants to know about the times or things, be, just let me know and I'll get you that information, okay?
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything? Not entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Moved. Reappell? Second by Vedder?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same side. Motion's carried, mean as adjourned.
Maybe I mean it.
I told him I'd check in within a year. He's saying it's not that political, I said, make sure you have an even better choice.
You guys doing pictures right now?
All right, get them.
Oh.
You've got $16 million there.
Should we, let's, let's. Just in case.
For girls to be there.
Offered you just general, it's.
Give us a recommendation.